And they're warm. I mean, like, how do you bring warm cookies?
Do you want a granola bar?
I don't.
Okay. Do you want a granola bar?
Anything for the enemy?
Absolutely.
We're back on the, uh...
You've got granola bars, you've got Reese's Peanut Butter Cups.
Sharing snacks.
It's like Halloween.
Everybody's doing well.
Just take something.
Have a granola bar. It won't spike your sugar.
Granola bar is not going to kill that.
Oh, yeah. All right, this is good. No, no.
Okay, the snacks are being shared among all the parties. Impact on transportation.
Okay, you're up.
Come in. Come in, Coach.
We'll take it from here. Okay, how about that? The proposed action... I knew the break was a mistake. The proposed action may result in a change... You know how you have recess and then you can't get the class back together? May result in a change in two existing transportation systems. Answer yes. Adriana?
All right, so the traffic report... A traffic report was prepared... Two traffic reports have been prepared, I think, so far. It uses a conservative analysis of worst-case conditions, including overlapping programs, full staff, maximum overnight, and day guests, which yields a maximum AM peak hour of between thirty-four and fifty-one trips in and out, and PM peak hour between fifty-two and ninety-three trips in and out. A left-turn lane is now proposed for southbound traffic on 9G, which will involve the symmetrical widening of the roadway beginning two-hundred-fifty feet south of the Countryside Animal Hospital. Stop me if I am misquoting anything. And ending approximately at the existing Nyler Road intersection. A distance of approximately one-thousand-fifty-five feet. The roadway would be expanded to approximately forty-eight feet wide and remain within the existing DOT right-of-way or roadway shelf. That's the packed shoulder area. With the inclusion of the left-turn lane, the site driveway at 9G will operate as a level of service A, B, and C, with an average of approximately fifteen seconds of vehicle delay during peak hours. And southbound traffic on 9G will operate at a level of service A. So this has improved that existing condition prior to the proposed turn lane pretty notably. So when we look at question thirteen, impact on transportation, it may result in a change in the existing transportation system because we are widening the road and creating that turn lane. I think the question is whether, with the turn lane, the projected traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing road network.
Whoa. What was that? I'm hearing no's. Road network, so does that include the side roads?
Does that include the side roads?
You know, the little roads around there, you know?
Were those studied?
No, there's no contemplation.
Accesses to and from New York City, 9G. So just to give you some context, DOT has about eight-thousand-three-hundred-forty vehicle trips per day. So it has a very high capacity.
Do you think you're actually going to? But that was my key concern, if you remember. With those numbers, do you think you are exceeding the capacity?
No.
Yeah, I mean, the project is estimated to generate twenty-six total trips in the AM peak hour and forty-seven in the PM peak hour. So if you think about twenty-six trips and forty-seven trips relative to eighty-three-hundred vehicles a day, it's less than one percent.
The roadway capacity is a multiple. If it had to be.
But shouldn't it be a no?
It almost should be.
Subject to change? No? Everyone likes no?
We're talking about thirteen A.
Yeah.
Yep, thirteen A.
No or small.
Well, it says existing... It says existing roadwork.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a fair point, Jack.
I know, it's so silly.
If it's enough to require an off-ramp or a left-turn lane, doesn't that imply that it exceeds the existing roadwork? Otherwise, you would have to have a left-turn lane.
The left-turn lane is a function of the development of the project, not the capacity of the road. So the question is focused on the capacity. So, for example, if you had a... You were in the village of an adjoining municipality and you had a development project that was going to be a destination. You were going to put a Chick-fil-A or something in there. And all of a sudden, the site was a destination and that local little intersection in the village couldn't handle it. That's the intended purpose of that question, just to kind of give you a relevant example. And we're talking eighty-three-hundred vehicles a day now. That is the existing monitored volume. And as Rodney had said, the capacity of the road is significantly more than that.
Well, it depends how you define capacity, I guess. Existing capacity isn't sufficient to allow people to pull into the development. That's why you need the left-turn lane.
So here, I can... If I could read from the workbook, not statute, but guidance. Capacity is defined as the maximum number of vehicles for any given unit of time which can be accommodated on a road. It's semi-independent of the demand for roads and it considers traffic conditions, roadway characteristics, and traffic controls such as signing signals. It's about the physical amount of vehicles and pedestrians a road can handle.
I think his point is...
Same issues.
The road would have been impacted if the left-turn lane was not proposed.
Right. I think this is where we get to strategy on the part two. If this was done when the project first came in, you know, you might have one answer. But now the project includes all this mitigation, which, you know, we think warrants a different answer at this point. But, you know, it's your document. If you want to check it and we can explain why, how we've mitigated, that's fine.
Pete, what were you going to say?
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, the left turn is... The left turn is... I don't want to say it's more of a convenience, but, I mean, you know, the left turn is going to help keep the traffic along 9G moving better. I don't think it's a capacity issue. I think it's more of, you know, a convenience to keep, you know, the traffic along, you know, the through lane moving quicker and, you know, allow the turns to get into the turn lane. But again, I mean, I don't think it's a lot like to argue over if you want to keep it as a moderate to large and they can just, like, address it in the part, you know, three.
Right. The level of service is how well... How fast the traffic is moving. The capacity is can the roads actually handle such traffic?
I don't feel strongly about it, frankly.
What about, like, events where you have a spike in traffic?
All of our traffic studies have taken into consideration the maximum use of the site with events. And then some. I think it's a one-point-five additional capacity that's been added as an even more conservative number.
Maybe just to make our seeker record complete, maybe it's better to just leave it as a moderate to large and provide documentation as to what you've done, why the left turn is going to be like a good thing. So maybe it's just better to just leave it and provide, like, a record of what you've done.
Okay, anybody... Anything else on thirteen? Yes, and A is marked moderate to large. Everything else is marked no to small, no or small. Okay. Fourteen, impact on energy. Sorry.
Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of energy. That should be checked off as yes at the top. So the action will require a newer upgrade to an existing substation. We think that's a no or small impact. The proposed action will require the create... This is one of those, by the way. This is one of those where there's a number. And if you exceed that number, it's moderately large. Right, so this is kind of cut and dry. The proposed action may utilize more than two-thousand-five-hundred megawatt-hours per year of electricity. And the proposed action may involve heating and/or cooling of more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed. I think a couple of things came to mind for me for this section. This town is a Planet Smart community. There is a solar facility. We know that there are solar panels on the site. I'm not really clear how much that really offsets the energy use and whether that was factored into the calculations, whether there were any energy-saving techniques that are being used on the site that might reduce energy use and so forth. So those are the types of, kind of, responses that I would be interested in. But I... And I defer to the board for any additional comment or concerns there.
Okay, the answers are dictated to us, basically, by the standards and we need more information on energy use. And whether there's offset of solar panels.
I think in general, the question is, right, can those numbers be offset? I don't think that the CAC... It appears from the CAC and the Planet Smart Task Force's website that they're mostly focused on government greenhouse gas emissions at this time. So there's not really a warrant for community greenhouse gas inventory or project-based greenhouse gas inventory. But those types, you know, those types... That's the purpose of this being on the secret documentation.
Okay.
I think the question also goes to whether this amount of electricity is going to require, like, a new substation and transmission lines. And as far as we know from Central Hudson, that's not going to be an issue. So we'll provide that narrative on the energy usage.
And energy conservation.
Energy conservation techniques.
Fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting.
So I think outdoor lighting is really the question on this one. We've looked at the lighting plan. We didn't have any major concerns, major secret-level concerns. We have to get more into the site-level details. But so we opine no or small impact may occur on this. But yes, it's a new development with new lighting. And so, you know, the proposed action may result in an increase of outdoor lighting.
In fifteen A, did you... Did you look at the noise regulations of the Conference Center law? There are some noise level requirements there.
I thought it referred to the...
It refers to the general standard.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, there's special permit requirements in the Conference Center section of the road. Yes, and we comply with those, yeah.
Sixty. It's sixty or noises that are otherwise, you know, objectionable. Yeah, they're sort of written.
Yeah, and the applicant did provide an analysis of special use permit requirements and how they meet all of those requirements.
Part of it is, you know, you have a very large setback for activities. So we're complying with all those setbacks for outdoor activities. Plus, there's a berm going in, landscaping, vegetation.
Is that during those events?
Of course. Yeah, all of these things are provided to show compliance with the special use permit. And during events, there's an outdoor event area that's been shown on the plan.
And there are regulations about amplified anyways. So...
Yep, and so we provided a whole special permit conformance document that illustrates our conformance with each... You know, we acknowledge each of those issues that are brought up and we show how we conform.
Okay. So my question was D, about D. The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. It may not be bright light. It may not be a lot of light, but that's a fairly broad question, isn't it? I mean, there's going to be a lot of little lights on this property.
I believe in my review of this question, I looked at their foot candle measurements.
Okay.
Their foot candle measurements dissipate to point zero, point zero, zero well before the law line.
Okay.
So you may see that there's a light far away, but that's different than shining and lighting someone else's property.
Okay.
For the amount of concern that's being voiced, it's amazing to me that there's only five, really, points under number fifteen because the concern over noise, the concern over light pollution, odor not, but those other two are huge, huge concerns, not only mine, but all the local residents. So I'm really surprised that there's only a couple places to answer that or answer how it's going to impact.
So potentially, E, the proposed action may result in lighting in a sky glow brighter than the existing area conditions. You know, I don't know if that's something that you guys are comfortable...
Well, we have all dark-skies compliant. So just with respect to the lighting plan, I mean, it's designed to be the minimal amount of lighting required. So there are, you know, large poles and so forth showing lighting. There's small lighting. There's building lighting on each of the buildings. And there's generally bollards and low lighting. All of the lighting is dark-skies compliant. So that means that all of the lighting is projected down versus up. We provided a lighting plan with all of the details of every light. So every light has an identifier on the plan. And there's a detail showing exactly what that light looks like and what light that fixture projects out. As Adriana had indicated, we've reviewed this plan multiple times and made modifications to it just to ensure that there's no light that is spilling over, you know, from a foot candle basis onto adjoining properties. Again, all the properties to the south. There's an extensive berm that is going to be proposed. I mean, we meet the setback requirement. In addition, there's an extensive berm with landscaping that we've provided as well just to further ensure that there isn't anything that dissipates over onto those properties.
And just to address your comments, Mr. Thorpe, Seeker deals with, you know, large, community-wide impacts. So it may be that under Seeker, you know, there's not an impact. But if you want a particular tweak to the lighting plan to address, you know, a particular spot that you think is too bright, that's something you can do during your site plan review. So it's not the end of the discussion.
Educate me, if you will. If I'm to look south or to look north, you're about a quarter to a half a mile above me, am I going to see illumination? Will I know that there's an entity up there? Or will I think it's still untouched property? What will I see?
I think it depends on the grade of where you're standing.
We're of equal elevation.
Well, I mean, you probably notice lights there now. I mean, I think with any development project, if anyone has a light on their house, you know, you may have a light on your house that the properties can see. When you add any lighting, there may be lighting that you see in the sky. But the requirement is for dark-skies compliant and certain colors of lights, what we've complied with. The county has a very rigorous lighting requirement. We've complied with the color that the county has required. And they've actually reviewed this plan and commented on that. So I think to the extent that we've mitigated the light as much as we can, we have and probably and then some. So we encourage you to look at that lighting plan. And I think Adriana has looked at it. And, you know, we meet those requirements in your code.
Because as we stand out underneath the night sky, I mean, that's the whole idea of Clinton in places like this, right? That's why people come to our area. There's no greater sense of joy for me to stand in my swimming pool and look skyward at night. But I can also see Poughkeepsie, which looks like the sun is still up. And I can look westerly and I can see Kingston, and it looks like the sun is still up. So I'm hoping I don't see that as I look north. I want to still see that. And I never realized it till somebody rented one of my properties and said, "I never saw the stars before." And I go, "How is that possible?" And now I know how it's possible. So I'd like to see that same sense of calm step.
And I think all those safeguards are in place to ensure that. So I encourage you to just read that, you know, review the lighting plan and the colors, the types of lights and so forth that we're utilizing. We're happy to address those and make changes as necessary. I think, you know, Pete's office also has familiarity looking at lighting plans and he can give us his opinion as well.
They could do some screening, Theresa.
There's a lot of screening. There's a whole landscaping plan.
A dome?
There's a berm.
Dome. I'm wondering that under F, other impact, should we note temporary noise from construction activities?
I think that's a good idea.
Have some, like, discussion on that in maybe a part three. I don't know.
Sure. I just also want to point out, this is a project that is located in the town of Clinton and in the town of Hyde Park. We recently provided you... I don't know why this keeps doing this. We recently provided you with a... We don't like to do interim submissions, but we had provided the town of Hyde Park with a document that we felt it was important for the town of Clinton to have as well. And we did complete a noise analysis for our presentation before the town of Hyde Park. So although that was just recently provided to you, I just want you to make you aware. I don't think Adriana has had a chance to look at this or Pete has had a chance to look at this. And we encourage you to review that.
So that's a good point. So why don't we... I think Pete's idea is good about the other impacts, construction, noise. Because we'd want to know what the hours are going to be and stuff. But why don't we just say, subject to the review of the sound study? I've seen it. It was pretty long. I didn't, you know, I saw it and started to read it and then...
I got as far as the formulas.
I think these answers are fine, but just if you look at it and you have other thoughts.
We'll note that that report would be included in any part three documentation that's provided.
And because the overall question is noted as yes, it does warrant, you know, the part three response regardless. It's like the overarching rationale for why these were selected as no or small. So we can just, you know, perhaps just...
Sure.
All right, so what are we doing on that? Are we going to put down construction noise and...
Yeah, under F.
I think moderate to large.
And then that'll be addressed in the part three. Okay.
Impacting human health.
Number nine, page nine.
Page nine, number seventeen.
Sixteen.
Oh, well, sorry. So sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. That screening question's a no. So we now are on page ten. It is eight fifty-seven.
Yeah, and this one...
You got four red flags on the back page, though.
And don't forget consistency with community character.
I would never.
So we are at a critical point. And this may take a while. I'll do whatever people want. We could quit now and do this some other time, or we could try to do it now.
Yep, we're all here.
It's going to take a while.
It doesn't have to take a while.
Nobody likes just moderate to large to go home.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, you want to take a shot at it and then...
Yeah.
All right. So consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. This is always a silly one to answer because it's a little bit of a double negative. But so, yes. Because...
Right, okay.
Right, it's a little bit of a double negative.
I mean, I think seventeen could just be a no. We've already had the Zoning Board of Appeals weigh in that it's a permitted use. That is your zoning law. And we've also provided you with references to the comp plan where this is permitted. So it is consistent with your zoning law. Whether, you know, in eighteen, whether it gets to the community character is another story. But I don't see any evidence in your record that it's not permitted. I mean, our zoning board, your zoning board, has weighed in twice now.
I think from a zoning perspective, that's true. The comp plan is not as clear.
I would go with that, yeah.
What is, in A, what is surrounding the land use pattern referred to? How big is surrounding? Is that the town as a whole? Is it the adjacent properties?
I would think it would be a general, like, adjacent.
What I'm thinking about, obviously, is omega.
It's really adjacent to the site.
Yeah, I wouldn't extend it all the way.
It's really intended to be adjacent. So we would argue it is not in sharp contrast to adjacent uses. I mean, it's laid out as a hamlet-style development. It has a lot of open space.
Okay. Seventeen A, how do we feel about that?
So we're keeping yes on seventeen, big seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
I told you we should have adjourned.
Victoria, I appreciate your point, but I think, you know, if you would include it omega, maybe we would have gotten a no, but I don't think there's anything...
Yeah, I was like, if you put omega...
Well, no, but this is, again, this is the land use plan.
The proposed action is consistent with zoning regulations there, right? But that's half of C. Correct.
Okay.
To me, omega is the elephant in the room here.
But it's not adjacent to, I mean...
I understand that. But it's in the town. It is a conference center. It is of the same acreage. It has more buildings. I mean, that, to me, is going to be the most relevant comparison. And when you get to the eighteen, those are all very narrowly drawn questions that you could argue don't include omega. So I don't know where else you talk about it. And I think we should talk about it.
So is the answer to say moderately to large? And that's part of their answer? Is the reference to omega?
I don't know.
Well, okay, but it... I'm sorry, Jack.
I'm frustrated by the way the questions are phrased.
It refers to surrounding land use patterns. Omega is a one-off. Does that change your analysis at all?
Maybe, maybe. We're going to be having this discussion again with Malia. And if this one goes forward, then we have two non-comparable but pretty much exact comparable situations. So, you know, at what point do we expand the focus of discussion from immediately adjacent to the town as a whole?
Right. Is fifteen vineyards a pattern? Is two vineyards a pattern? I mean, seriously. You can only have so many conference centers in the town, but it might still be a pattern.
Yeah, exactly. So I...
I mean, like, two could be a pattern.
Three certainly could be a pattern.
Different from and sure... This has to be moderate to large, right?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Or we're not sure. Okay.
I would think it should be moderate to large.
Of all of them, that seems like the easiest one.
Like, I hear you. But and maybe I'm saying moderate to large now because of the way the question is phrased, may, right? We haven't really had a fulsome discussion about exactly the question that you're posed.
The questions are very frustrating because they don't really come to grips with some of our particular characteristics.
And it's maybe different from, which is very benign, or sharp contrast to, you can take your pick, which was whatever you want, you know? I mean, it's...
And this one may contrast, frankly, favorably to omega in terms of impact on the community.
Yeah, okay.
I think you should put A and C as moderate and then that's where you're talking about omega and a comprehensive plan.
Okay. Proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations.
I mean, if Perry's got a point about the zoning regulations, but I think the comp plan is broader than that, right?
Right, great. So that's moderate to large, right? Do we all agree on that?
I think those are the two topics. And I don't think E or F is. It's infrastructure.
So for E and F, yeah, I had selected no to small, but I just wanted to... Because community plans and community character are so localized, I just want to make sure that we're all talking about it. The proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that's not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure. I think that is no.
And you're saying you think it's no because it's 9G and all the site infrastructure is going to be private?
It's moderated on site.
Yeah, it's private.
And then F, right, is no because it's all private.
I agree.
Exactly.
Yep. Okay, so we have A and C are moderate to large and the rest are no to small.
So you didn't mark G?
G should be, I think G should be no to small. Again, we discussed the induction of secondary development impacts. That's typically a residential use or a commercial, a major commercial draw, a mall or something.
Okay.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A.
So are you proposing a Chick-fil-A?
All right. And then consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character.
I know, it's yes, right?
Victoria?
I mean, you know how I feel.
What is community character?
So I think, based on what we respond, how we responded in the historic section, A can remain no to small.
Yep.
Yes.
Agreed.
The two that I flagged for you guys is that the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. And the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. Now, again, visual analyses have been provided. Architectural renderings have been provided. Now again, visual, visual analyses have been provided. Architectural renderings have been provided. So I would really defer to the board on this again because of the local context and importance that this board make these decisions.
I mean, E, I would note that the very first comment we got from Dutchess County Planning was to perhaps scale back the overall size of the development. So I, I, I think even just that feedback that we got from the county would lead me to say moderate to large on E.
I, I agree. It does say architectural, it, to be fair, it does say architectural scale, but I agree with you. Yeah.
And wouldn't F, wouldn't anything be different than the existing landscape?
Well, yeah, if you, if that's a fair point. I, I think that these should be moderate to large and there'll be a part three where they do, they do an explanation, exactly. And they do an explanation of why that's not true and we can evaluate it.
Can we just go back to seventeen C for one second for me?
No, we can't, Jerry.
Of course we can.
I was in the bathroom.
Seventeen C.
How is that inconsistent with zoning regs? Because aren't, aren't we?
It's a land use plan.
The local land use plan is the comprehensive plan, which is broader. I think we all agree that ZBA ruled on zoning regulations. So it's, we're talking about the local land use plans.
I think comprehensive.
If you read that broadly, including the comp plan, I think it's fair.
If you, yeah, if you look at goal four, recommendation five, Clinton should allow only low intensity tourist activities that are compatible with the rural character of the town's hamlets and open areas.
We also have, page one eighty-five.
Of the workbook?
Of the comprehensive plan.
Not a statute.
Um, the, the comprehensive plan does want the town to allow economic opportunities that are consistent with primarily rural residential character of the town. It encourages the restoration and adaptive reuse of historic properties by permitting a range of uses, provided that the reuse is subject to performance standards as part of the special permit requirement. Page one seventy-seven, the comp plan promotes economic development, including agriculture, tourism and urban redevelopment. So, you know, I think you can find support in the comprehensive plan.
So the statement promotes economic development, the encouraging adaptive reuse of historic properties, promoting economic development and urban redevelopment is actually, it is in the comp plan, but it's quoted from the Greenway Compact in like, I believe, like in an introductory segment. So, you know, it's, it's part of the Greenway Compact. I don't know that anywhere in Clinton would consider itself urban.
I'm sure we'll all be reading the comprehensive plan.
It's like another, it's like another important book where you can find whatever you want.
So, so to Jack's point about omega, you're, you're going to maybe do some kind of a
Sure.
Why this is not as big as omega, whatever you want to say.
We've actually done some preliminary analysis.
Yeah.
Omega's about 260 acres if you count up everything they own.
Okay.
They have 116 buildings. They have 260 staff in full season.
Okay.
So, you know, significantly more than, than this project is proposing. You know, we were basing our numbers on the publicly available information. But about 3,833 people per month. So, you know, it's, it's similarly sized project.
I, I just, so the part three is kind of, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, omega's bigger. The, the part three is kind of like a reply brief for you. You're going to kind of respond to what we've done, you know, you're going to tell us where you disagree and why. And give us other explanations that we asked for, including the omega stats would be helpful.
Sure.
So that'll be the next step. And then I don't know how long that takes to do. I don't know when you want to come back, but.
Well, don't we have to, are we, are we voting on the part two now tonight?
No, 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 no. There's a lot, oh, definitely. Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, I think a lot of the things.
So, so you're, okay, so we, you, you're going to give us the, give us the sequence then.
So I think what, this gives us the, the kind of to do list, right? Gives the applicant to do list. I think, well, I think what would be helpful is maybe we come together with a, with our lists of what we're going to, what new information we're pulling. We're pulling together. I think a particular concern is going to be the, the habitat or biodiversity assessment, making sure that that is, that we have a timeline for that and we understand when that's going to be provided and the scope. Yeah, of course. Right. So we just have to.
Well, i- i- isn't the process that we
To vote?
That we get a, a new draft of the part two, we vote on the part two and then they, in the, in parallel, in the meantime, you can work on all the stuff that we just talked about tonight.
Well, if you want.
No, we, no, we, we have to get the information and come back and meet again.
Before the part two? Or is, or is the information part of the part three?
It's not something that you vote on. I mean, you can straw poll to make sure everyone's comfortable moving forward, but you make your determination of significance.
No, I understand that. I understand we're not making the, the significance. I get that.
Yeah, so, so the part two is the rubric for the part three.
Understood.
The part three then becomes a rubric for whatever next steps you might take.
Understood. Apologize.
So, so in terms of timing, we'll, we don't know yet. Is that what we're saying?
I think we're most likely focusing on that first December meeting, but
Okay.
A lot of that will be conditioned upon just making sure that we're agreeing on the scope of the items that are required.
I think we need to get a call with Eric.
What's that?
I think we need to get Eric on, on board.
Okay, I mean, we can, um, we can, if we need to schedule a second meeting, we can do that if we're not ready by the second. Maybe.
Pencils in for the first December meeting because having a date might help some of the constituents work toward a deadline.
All right. Um, there's a lot of stuff they need to do. I don't know if they're going to make it, yeah. They just, they said pencil, they said pencil. It's just in pencil, you can erase it and then they're not, then they're not on anymore. It may be a little tight. I, I agree.
Yeah.
So I think action items, we should have it at the December meeting. If you could put us on that agenda and then we'll coordinate with Adriana on, on any outstanding additional items that maybe.
I think we're penciling you in.
And don't forget, somebody has to ask her hydrological, the one who did the water before.
They're going to wait to see what they have and then we'll decide.
Any other questions?
Do you have anything else? Pete? Everybody okay on, on the board here? We're all good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excellent job. Thank you. October seventh minutes from.